Over our steps, you see our paths, Lord. Help us to walk in ways that honor you. Help us to speak in a way that shows we have discernment. Develop in us the character we need, Lord, that we can represent you well. We thank you for these men and women who represent this county and the guidance they give us, Lord, for the protection we have under their leadership. God, we pray you watch over them and guide them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Mr. Fazbear, would you lead us in the flag, please?
I'll lead. Lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like, Chair, to entertain a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the chair, y'all should have the... Might have a couple, too, by the way, that's not on your list. Number one is receiving recommendations from the ambulance, from the ambulance committee, and also to adjudicate a permit request. First item on the agenda this morning is order approving budget amendment for the district attorney's office for fiscal year 2023-24 in an amount of $38,667 to fill the vacant diversion office position. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion? Mr. DA, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, board members. My name is Crosby Parker. I'm the district attorney for Harrison, Hancock and Stone County. I appreciate y'all hearing me this morning. What we're requesting is an order amending our budget for the rest of the year. We've had been vacant of a diversion officer since February of this year. That position has normally, historically, been funded by the Mississippi Department of Corrections. They are no longer going to fund that position. I don't really have an argument for them because we were the only DA's office in the state that had a diversion officer that was funded by the Mississippi Department of Corrections. So now that that's been taken away, our pretrial diversion program has about 150 participants right now. This is really our second chance for low-level, nonviolent, first-time offenders that if they complete the program, their record will be expunged. This is a very important program for our county, and it needs to be funded. We've done our best to try to handle the workload with our current investigators, but that's just not possible. So this funding request will fill that vacant diversion officer program. I think it's good for our county, and it's good for those participants. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the DA? No. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, President.
Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Next, we'd like to recognize Cynthia, Ms. Cynthia Chauvin, executive director of CASA of South Mississippi, to discuss for, discuss updates for this agency. Cynthia?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly about CASA. I know this entity has long-term supported the work of CASA volunteers in Harrison County. At the fall of last year, we had an opportunity. We were approached, I, I'm with CASA of Hancock County. We were approached because the organization was looking to restructure, and we had the opportunity to do things a little different and be able to merge resources so that we could serve more children. Currently, in Harrison County, there are 236 children in foster care. CASA of Harrison County has been only able to serve 84 of those children. So my board of directors in Harrison, in Hancock County got together, and the organization that formerly existed, which the board of supervisors graciously provided in-kind office space at the old youth court, we came together, and that organization has since dissolved, and we are now in a capacity to be able to extend more services to this, this county.
And what you will be doing is combining the Harrison County Committee or...
Yes, absolutely. We will be, absolutely. We will be combined as a, as a regional program, being able to share administrative costs and be able to put more revenue into recruiting, training, and supporting advocates with the ultimate goal of being able to serve every child in foster care in Harrison County. And our new name is CASA of South Mississippi. Here with me this morning is our legal counsel, Heather Smith, who has been an incredible partner in this work and has long-term had a connection to CASA.
I'm glad you identified her, Smith. I was fixing to say Ms. Lattner.
I'll take, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And we just wanted to say we thank the support that you provide and for the new members of the board of supervisors. I know you have some familiarity with CASA, but we recruit, train, and support volunteers from this community to advocate for children who are pure victims of child abuse and neglect. And in the coming months, you'll be seeing a lot of us as we pretty vigorously start recruiting to meet the goal of serving every child in Harrison County. So thank y'all.
Mr. Faz, would you like...
We're just here to ha, to answer any questions that, that you may have. I wanted all of you to know, make sure that you didn't hear about this merger on the street. So we wanted to come and just, just be here in case you had any questions and to give our contact information. And we're an open book, so anything you hear, anything you need, please reach out to us. We will probably be reaching out to all of you. I'm sure all these people, y'all got packed out today. I'm sure they all came to hear about CASA, so we're excited to hear about the word. But yeah, we'll be, we'll be looking to y'all as we, we grow and move over into Harrison and Stone counties. We're excited to be here.
Thank y'all. Thank you, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approving termination of the lease by and between Harrison County and CASA of Harrison and Stone County effective February 1st, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? The only discussion, I would say, is apparently y'all gonna, will, will have a lea, a lease, a new lease with, with the new group.
So we've actually secured location at the night nonprofit center.
Oh, okay.
So we will, we will be in that vicinity.
Good deal, you're on, good deal. Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Item four, consider auto accident claim of surgery. Wayne, Wayne None in the amount of $288.90 less taxes of $270. Representatives of Wayne None here, might would like to speak? Here none, nobody? What is the pleasure of the board? Tim, you might want to just get, you might want to give the new board members a...
It's basically a, a new tort claim act. The county can be responsible if the board adjudicates that some county employee was guilty of negligence. Generally, on these type of claims, we look for whether or not there were signs of warning that there were mowers ahead, so the citizen has a, can go another direction if they don't want to take the risk of passing a mower, or if the guards are missing on the equipment so that it would not deflate the materials that are thrown up. So if the board adjudicates that the county was negligent, somebody has authority to pay the claim. If it does not find any negligence, on behalf of the county employee, the board would claim to be exempt, and he would not be able to pay it. In this instance, I don't see the fee in the leads that there was some negligence. The guard was apparently on the mower, and the signs were apparently warning. It's unfortunate. It's no different than driving down the road in a, in a car running over a rock, throwing up, and hitting your windshield. Happened to me on Calmeran Road not long ago. Mr. Bob went through pretty good. It just might something that ultimately, if there's no negligence on the part of the county, that you have authority to pay. The board would have to adjudicate that was some negligence.
Another example, Tim, would be a pothole. Once we're notified, we obligated to fill the potholes. But if we're not notified, we're not allowed.
Potholes, a little bit different. Except there, you're either constructive notice or actual notice. If you don't have either, then you're not liable there also.
Yeah. There's a case in here that they did get over to try and avoid. So it seemed like they, they did all they could to avoid the situation. But that...
Yeah, I, I, I can agree, but I, I don't see enough here to, I'll make a motion to deny the claim.
Here, there's a motion, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? I'll second the motion. Any, any further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by no?
No.
The motion carries. At this time, I recognize, oh, excuse me, consider auto claim of Earl Perrin Jr. in the amount of $252.52 less taxes of $236. Mr. Perrin? Mr. Mr. Perrin?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like for the board to consider correcting a hazard to the parking garage out back here. When you pull into the parking garage on the west end off of 24th Avenue, when you pull off the street up into the garage, you make an immediate right turn. Well, there's a big concrete curb running out that, that's squared off. It's, uh, it's been hit so many times. I've got pictures, I've turned pictures into your office of what I'm talking about. But it's, it's even right now, it's scarred up. You can't even hardly see the yellow paint from the car tires hitting it. Well, when we came in that morning, or that afternoon, I hit it, and guess what? I had a blowout right there on the spot. And I gotta tell you this, that car was only four months old. It was a brand-new car. Therein with the blowout on this brand-new car because of this curb sticking out. It's easy to correct the problem, and I've even had pictures of some of the other spots in the city of Long Beach, that when they have curbs kind of jettying out where they were low, they'll put curves on them, where if you do hit them, you'll roll right on them over them. It's no damage, no problem. Or the easy solution would be to put some of these big orange highway barrels on the end out there where you can see, you know, there's something there. Because when you come off the street, you're, you're kind of going upward, and you cannot see the curb over there. And it's, uh, and it was aggravating because, believe it or not, in this new car, they don't give you spare tires anymore. I had to call a wrecker and have that thing hauled back to the dealer's ship. But it was just unnecessary, and I just wish you would consider my claim. It's all I'm asking for. It's just that was the lower of the bids, and the tire I got put on my car. And I've had since had it repaired, and I just wish you'd consider my claim.
That's what we do. We're gonna consider. Thank you. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion and reference to his request.
I, I think we'll take a look at it and try to correct it. But in this particular situation, I'd make a motion to deny the claim.
There's a motion to deny. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? I will second the claim. Uh, there's a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Thank you. At this time, recognize Alan Weatherford to discuss EMS matter. Mr. Weatherford?
Good morning. My name's Alan Weatherford, resident of Long Beach, unincorporated area of Harrison County in Long Beach. I've been following this EMS program for about a year now. My comments are not intended to criticize this sport there. I think we all want a better Harrison County. I spoke to, last year I spoke to the Gutford City Council, and I've also spoken to the Blexton City Council twice regarding the EMS districts and potential 911 concerns. And what I heard from the leadership of those cities is we didn't have a seat. We didn't have a voice at the table with the county. It's unfortunate that the city and county were not able to address this EMS matter jointly. And we're going back to the 1970s, late 1970s way of doing business in this county with EMS. We now have three EMS districts, but that's, we're under the bridge now. I'm gonna talk about five brief points. The last board meeting, the Oversight Committee recommended an accredited EMS provider. Hopefully, this board will move forward with a vote and not continue to push the EMS provider decision down the road. If we continue to push this decision down the road, what additional stresses are we creating for the current EMS provider, such as possible manpower issues in the future? I had the opportunity to read the EMS Structure for Quality, Best Practices in Designing, Managing, and Contracting for Emergency Ambulance Services. It's a booklet, about 100 something pages. And I think where we fail in this county is not having an active, independent Oversight Committee. In this booklet, this was one of the hallmarks. Hopefully, this board will consider an Oversight Committee that meets quarterly and reports back to the board on this, on the EMS. The five of you are only voice in the unincorporated areas of Harrison County, other than Chief Sullivan. I ask each one of y'all to stay engaged in making sure we have adequate EMS coverage in Harrison County. While EMS is my last point, while EMS is under much scrutiny across this country for lagging response times, I believe our EMS providers would agree that our 911 system has been abused by callers that don't require EMS response. With that being said, hopefully, this board will consider budgeting funds to support a PSA and a mail-out to every 911 address in this EMS district to address the proper use of 911. In closing, and why I might have such an interest in our EMS is our family has received advanced life support care from our current EMS provider. And this will be the one time that I'll mention AMR. With that being said, I want to thank AMR for faithfully serving our community, Harrison County, for the last 40 years. To those long-term employees of AMR that have been in the EOC room across the hall every time this center has become operational, to those employees, I want to say thank you to AMR. So hopefully, y'all will consider voting on that as soon as possible. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Next item consent, uh, consent agenda, items seven through 16. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. On the tax assessors, order approving travel, hotel, and registration fee for Paula Liden, Sarah Fuller, Tracy Byrd, and Alex Barstow to attend the 2024 IAIO course 101, March 4 through 8 in Starville, Mississippi, estimated cost $5,180. This is within budget.
Motion.
Second? Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving in-county travel reimbursement for the tax assessors' office as listed. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledge and receipt of and approving petitions for increases to the 2023 real property rule as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledge and receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2022 personal property rule as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, what, somebody say, I'm sorry. Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Tax collector, order spreading upon the minute personnel changes for the tax collector's office as listed on file payroll administrator and personnel department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Start on quick. I'm sorry, I got a minute.
Give one, one, one.
I'm sorry, that computer's moving too quick for me. Order acknowledge and receipt of and approving petitions for increases to the 2023 real property rule as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledge and receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2022 personal property rule as recommended by the tax assessor. I think that we did. 20, 20, 22, 23. Order spreading up on the minutes, acceptance by the circuit clerk of proposal by election systems and software, sole source to provide support services for March 4, 2024 primary election, total amount of $11,825.
Motion.
Second. Second discussion? Have to go with that sole source again. Is it, uh...
It's compatible with the system that they have now.
So that's the only, it would not be compatible? Okay.
Let Justin speak to that.
Okay, Josh. ESNS, all but two counties in the entire state use ESNS. So that is the only provider essentially that we've used for the last three elect, three years.
Perfect. The reason being that it's compatible with the rest of your equipment. Anybody else could not make that compatible?
Yes, sir.
That's what I mean. Thank you. Any further discussion?
That, that date is March 12th, not March 4th. I had emailed previously about that.
I'd like the record to reflect that it was March 12th?
12th. 12th.
March 12th rather than March 4th. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. An encoded administration. Order authorizing the board president to execute county rating system recertification for 2024.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. County engineer. Order approving the final plan for Landry Trace subdivision Phase 2 located in Section 18, township 7 South, range 11 West, supervised voting District 2, First Judicial District as recommended by Jackie Turner County engineer and authorizing the board president to execute the same.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving the subdivision application for Robinwood Village subdivision, Phase 358 lots located in Section 6, Township 6 South, range 11 West, supervised voting District 2, First Judicial District as recommended by Jackie Turner County engineer.
Motion.
As bullet follow.
Second.
Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving the final plan for Oak subdivision Block E, Phase 2, 19 lots located in Section 38, Township 7 South, range 13 West, supervised voting District 3, First Judicial District as recommended by Jackie Turner Harrison County engineer.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving selection of EMAs and engineering services for the beachfall improvement Gomez project and authorizing negotiations of a contract for related services based on recommendations of the proposed review committee. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Election committee, order adjudicating and approving agreements between Harrison County's Republican and Democratic executive committees in the Harrison County election commission for the March 12, 2024 primary election, also including runoff elections if necessary.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving assistance from facilities and maintenance and/or the road department with the following and any other responsibility needed for the primary election on March 12, 2024, as well as a possible runoff.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving the merger of precinct 5101, Margaret Sherry Library, located at 2141 Pops Ferry Road, Blexton, Mississippi, into precinct 5091 Bay Area, located at 1907 Pops Ferry Road, Blexton, Mississippi.
Question.
Discussion? Got the two. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries.
If there could be a correction made, it's Bay Central, not Bay Area.
Oh, Bay Central.
Bay Central. It says Bay Area, Bay Central, okay, let's...
That's the name of the precinct.
Anything else? I'd like to reflect a correction as 5091 Bay Central, not Bay Area.
Don't, I have one question.
Yes.
Did we ever change the Gulf Haven voting precinct?
No, but that's something we're gonna be working on.
Okay.
I know, we showed that, but that is something we got to get on. I don't know if we'll have time to change it before the election, so...
It's too late to make any other precinct changes, and this particular precinct change will not go into effect until April 15th. The election's already been set, and we're exactly three weeks and six days away from this election, from preparing anything, so it can't be changed now.
Wait, is there anything we can do differently of Gulf Haven?
Differently?
I mean, it's gonna be, it's a value there.
I agree it's bad. I've been there myself. It was my precinct for maybe one year.
If we could find some parking, that's the issue. The difficulty is, I think there's some sewer or something.
Well, there's, there's a plant of some sort.
That will not allow us to go around the building.
Right.
They're gonna try to take in parking areas around the back and the side. And I think there's some sewer issues that...
To the north, there's some sort of plant. And to the south of the building, there's a burn house that they practiced on. But I, I stopped by there. Last election, we dropped something off that they needed. And I parked on the side of the road, but as I was pulling in, there was some cars pulling into the grass. And I walked through the grass, and it was pretty solid, even though it was a damp day. I don't know if it gets too marshy if it rains, but it, with them parking there, it could interfere, and the truck has to go out.
Troy's absolutely correct.
Well, I agree.
It's dangerous. We've got to do something. We've got to find another place.
There is some suggestions that's been made, but like I said, it would have had to have been done in December to make it...
One of the most sensible things to do is move it possibly to the fairground some way, but you can't move it out of the, you can't move it out of the voting district.
No. I've talked to Barbara. She's District 3 election commissioner. There's some options, but you have to look at the math. You have to look at where you're gonna cut it, if you merge, if you move. Then you have to worry about creating more splits for the House and Senate, State House and Senate seats. There's a lot more involved than just picking another location.
I was gonna get with you, and we really need to look at this and get this straight now. Somebody's gonna get hurt.
Barbara agrees to. It's just a matter of figuring out what's best and how many people you can put in a certain place. And we all know that District 2, District 3 grew a lot with three districts in. Maybe it's something that we need to consider next time we do three districts and where precincts are laid out, too. That might be a consideration. Any more questions, former?
No, thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Meg.
Thank you. Hi. We have a zoning hearing appeal at 10 o'clock, and I think we're there. Mr. Eric?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is an appeal for a subdivision that was proposed on Babyu Avenue in, out in Henderson Point. In the appeal process, both appellate and applicant are allowed three 10-minute speakers. All exhibits attended. For the record, shall be marked exhibit A, et cetera. The appellate will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. Please address any questions to the board, and the board will hear all, hear all comments and then render their decision. Do you have any questions, Mike?
Oh, okay, next one. Okay. Good, thank you. Eric, one question.
Okay.
I've looked for the transcript. There was no transcript provided to us on this particular appeal. I don't know.
I thought it was put in there for all.
I, I don't.
Okay.
If it's in this one, I, I did not have it in mind. I don't believe, I don't believe it was. Did y'all see a transcript in the backup? I didn't see it. It makes it easier if we have a transcript to read.
Yes, let me, let me step out. I'm like, I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
Because I know we have one.
It wasn't, it wasn't me. I think we're talking about a time element here as well, though.
We don't mind waiting until the transcript comes, if you wanted to carry on.
What I'm talking about, we'd have to take time to read it.
It is not a super long.
It's not long?
Yes, sir.
Would the board want to continue with the appeal without the transcript?
Well, because I'm not even more to hear the arguments.
We can hear the arguments.
Do you read?
Yeah. We'll go, we'll go ahead, Eric. We'll go ahead, too. Go ahead, make your call, and we'll go ahead with it.
Okay.
Hold on, just a minute. Now, now, hold on. Only transcript, yeah, just a minute to show any voting for the recommendation. This thirty-two is the. This is the. Eric, we'll go ahead and.
Okay.
And start, just, just give the rundown on the procedure part, if you would.
Of the appeal procedure?
Yeah. All right, who did you take first? Abby? Okay, you have, I think, thirty minutes. You can divide that time up among anyone who would like to speak, who's got thirty minutes. If you would please identify yourself and your address.
My name is Julie Gasspart. I live at three thirteen Lot Iverville in Luba, Louisiana, and I own property on Fifth Avenue across from the property that, across the bayou from the old city's old property. First of all, I'd just like to say there's a lot of unknowns. Everything's unknown or being deferred to a different place. We talked about the boat head and what that entails. They just wanted to six lots because they can provide six boat slips on the other side of Sebastian's Bridge for those six house, lots, which they say they can, people will be able to take jet skis or whatever to go get to their boat. Part of the issue is the jet skis. Who is going to monitor the jet skis? You're not just talking about Henderson Point right there. You're going into, the bayou goes into Past Christian Isles. I also own a piece of property that I reside in most, during the weekends, in Past Christian Isles, because after Katrina, when it took our house on the, there was so much up in the air. They didn't know how high you had a build. They didn't know what they were gonna do. And the community came together and did a, a plan. Mr. Bonk referred to that plan in his last meeting before this appeal, saying that the community wanted more, you know, to keep some commercialism in there, which is happening. They're building a bore, they're building, I don't know if it's a blind tiger or something, they're gonna have boat slips. They're planning on doing a ferry. So the unknown to that is, what does that bring into that area? They've used a very narrow street, it's two lanes, it's not that long. How congested is that gonna get? They said that we don't have a lot of building in that area in the interior lots. Yes, the outside lots have built up, but the insides have it. Past Christian's the same way, Isles is the same way. There's a lot of interior lots that haven't been built on, but in the last year, a lot of that is changing, and I can see it happen in both areas. So now you have those people building and influxing, so what, we have no traffic studies. He says that, what, he's calling it a subdivision. So are these lots gonna be not pointed by, what does the subdivision mean? I don't understand why he's calling it a subdivision. He can build four houses and nobody has a problem with that. It's what's supposed to be there. If you allow six houses, and we do have all this own developed land, once you allow that precedence, what's happening to the rest of that land in this little area? Henderson Point is a gem. It's a diamond in the rough that is no place else. Why do we need to change it? Build your four houses, nobody's upset about four houses. We all want to enjoy the community. Yes, it is beautiful, and he's got all the right ideas about different things, but once he builds, one minute they're selling the lots, one minute they're selling the lots to build on it custom, is another unknown. Are they, the condition you buy the lot, you have to have them build, or they just selling the lot? It changes. I'm not sure how that's affecting. The jet ski thing I brought up last time, once you get into that bayou, boats can't go under Sebastian's Bridge. We've lived there for forty years. We used to have to duck and push our way under the bridge. They raised the bridge, it really is the same way, because that little area fills up with sand all the time, and so the depth changes. So we always had to go out through the Past Christian Isles side and come out the bay back way. So all of that area's gonna be infiltrated, because I know for a fact, we used to have to do it. So you put in six houses there that can have jet skis or whatever, but you're also affecting another neighborhood that has no idea that they're getting ready to be affected by all of this. I'm gonna let someone else.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Identify yourself, Ms. Garziana, and your address.
Nancy Garziana, three twenty-nine Second Street, Past Christian, Henderson Point. Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to have this appeal given a fair and honest assessment and reexamination of the intricacies and discrepancies of this matter. Several members of this community, including myself, wrote letters to the planning commission to voice our concerns in opposition to the application for a conditional use permit that would allow for six home sites at this location. As previously expressed by the community, we stated that four homes at this location would be acceptable and more compatible with the neighborhood. There are legal parameters that have been established that do allow for the quantity of four homes to be built on this size property. These guidelines are set for good reason. Why should this be altered by way of a conditional use permit for the sole purpose that it suits the desires of the developer? By definition, a conditional use permit is a type of exception to the local zoning ordinance that allows the property owner to use the property in certain ways that do not comply with the current zoning laws. The surrounding neighborhood does have a say, and their voiced concerns and opposition in this case should matter and not be disregarded. We care deeply and desire to preserve the treasure of this special place that offers serenity and beauty. This place we affectionately know as the point. If the conditional use permit is allowed in this case, it would create a precedent that threatens the unique quality and character of this neighborhood that has long been enjoyed. Throughout history, in this area, there has been low-density, single-family style home buildings. The increase in vehicular traffic that will surely occur once the restaurant under construction is completed would only be compounded if a six-home-site subdivision were created in such close proximity in this tight area. This would also increase the likelihood of hazards to the pedestrians and cyclists who use these roadways. At the planning commission meeting, Commissioner Widener was the one commissioner that did ask a series of questions and truly seemed interested in finding facts regarding this proposal. This displayed his concern for the impact on the neighborhood and that he takes his position seriously. When answers to his questions were given, they were mostly evasive. One question that was asked was, just how many of the live oak trees would go? To which Mr. Bonk's reply was, I think very few. Conversely, just prior to that, the developer stated that several of the live oak trees are unhealthy. So the question is, which is it? Several trees or few? Mr. Bonk stated in a letter that was sent out that they plan on preserving every tree possible and that there's room to adjust lot lines to preserve trees. If this permit is approved, we ask of this board for a resolution that a stipulation be made that an independent and certified arborist be consulted as to the actual health and condition of the live oak trees when determining removal of such, especially since upon viewing the stand of live oaks, their appearance is that of health and vitality. If six home sites were permitted, this would result in the necessity for the construction of a concrete road down the center, thus would result in losing more of the tree canopy and increasing the likelihood of drainage issues and flooding, which occurs already on Bayview during any tropical storm, thus would hinder vehicular access in and out of the area. If the rules are bent in this instance, let's brace ourselves, because it won't stop here. This would create a precedent allowing anyone for any reason that suits their own whims to apply for such and would open the door to a more dense type of residential development. Something I just want to touch on was a statement that was made at the planning commission meeting by Commissioner Keys, which was a gross distortion. It was her assessment that Henderson Point is still wiped out ever since Katrina. That is simply not true. Indeed, Katrina did cause catastrophic damage, but as someone who has been here for the duration and have witnessed with my own eyes, I can state with surety that there has been a steady increase of rebuilding in this area, and I am happy to report this. This fact will be obvious to anyone who simply drives through the area to see for themselves. I want to highlight a couple of sentences from Ms. Joni Jensen's letter of opposition. This proposal is too dense for the land that is there. My family has been coming to Henderson Point my whole life, and we have owned property for over fifty years. The Henderson Point area is now a quiet and safe place for families and their children to experience coastal life at its best. Overdevelopment of the area will surely ruin it. And from Mr. and Mrs. Penton's letter, if it is legally approved to build four homes, then four should be all that is allowed. Building six homes and a road through the parcel will only cause further destruction to the surrounding landscape and trees, which in turn will cause more traffic in a more populated area. On a personal note, I have been a part of this community since I was four years of age. I absolutely love where I live. It's where I grew up, where I met my husband, it's where we were married, and it's where we raised our six children. It's my favorite place to be. I have a son who lives in Maui. I've been there, it's nice, but Henderson Point is the place that I most want to be. It's my home, and I know that this proposal will be detrimental to the quality and character of my neighborhood. It is not only incompatible with the neighborhood, but it goes against the expressed desires of the current stakeholders of this community, the ones who have long invested time, energy, and resources into this unique and wonderful place. We ask that you carefully consider the facts and the, and the far-reaching implications of your decision today. Please vote to deny the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Any question?
Do we have?
Remind the board that there's any, any questions you welcome to ask.
Yeah, they have, um, you've got, um, twelve minutes.
I just have one more thing. Another unanswered thing, a question we have is, does, they have Ashley's, want seven lots, because one lot will be a community pool area. So if they decide that they don't want that to be a community pool area anymore, can a house be built on that? And how is the, if, I still don't understand the subdivision thing, so are they gonna have like HOA fees to keep up the pool? That's another unknown. Who, who's taking care of the pool? If they're sell, if they outright selling these six houses that they're building with a community pool area, who's in charge of keeping the pool area up? And if they decide they don't want the pool anymore, y'all gonna let them build another house, because now we got seven houses there? What kind of condition use is that gonna be? That's another unanswered question.
You got about ten minutes. If there's anyone else on the appeal.
Do we have any other speakers?
No other speaker? No? Any questions from the board today? Okay, we'll recognize the.
Pet Bump from U.S. Schaefer, seven ninety-five Howard Avenue in Biloxi. Thomas Jennings, developer, is here, and the current property owner was making better work this year also. This is two little maps, the subdivision area in my prepared comments.
Is this the internet commission?
Everything works, except for the middle map, but it's just for illustration purposes. It does not need to be part of the roadmap.
I think this was in our backup.
Yes. So on the cover is just the layout of the subdivision. So the whole property is about three acres in size, but the subdivision is just over two acres in size. And so the reason for the subdivision versus the four lots is that this is a proper way to do real estate, where we'd have a street with each lot connecting to the street. Bayview is at the top, there's a red light at Highway ninety, which is just east of us, and there's a stop sign, Third Avenue to the west, Mulaney Bayou to the south. This is the former Bay Lumper property to the north. This is where Annie's Restaurant was, and there's been a restaurant on this property since nineteen twenty-eight until Hurricane Katrina. So nothing's happened on the property since Hurricane Katrina. It does not connect to Third Avenue on the west. So this case is a conditional use permit request, which is necessary for any subdivision with five or more lots. The application does not require a zoning change or variances from any zoning regulations. It is simply a request to allow a six-lot subdivision on a two-acre parcel of land. The proposed development is fully consistent with the board of supervisors adopted Henderson Point Past Christian Isles community plan and the Harrison County Comprehensive Plan. The community plan identifies the area of the subject property as the neighborhood center. On page fifty-three and figure thirty-nine of the community plan, it states businesses, multifamily, and single-family housing would be permitted in the neighborhood center. This conditional use permit application for six single-family houses is shown on the site plan. So on the second map, page two, the community plan identifies. the community plan identifies the area north of Mulaney Bayou, west of Highway 90, and east of Bay St. Louis as the neighborhood plan. So for years and years, Bayview Street has a boat launch at the bottom. The former, uh, but storage facility is where the restaurant and Blind Tiger Beach is going. And then the subdivision is highlighted in green right there. This is the second application for a small, single-family residential subdivision. In September, we presented to the planning commission a 12-lot subdivision using development standards in the zoning ordinance called a reduced lot line subdivision, similar to a zero lot line subdivision. The design theme was for a cluster of beach cottages surrounded by beautiful live oak trees on the property. The reduced lot line standards allow smaller lots than the conventional zoning ordinance. It also requires a zoning district change from the existing R1 low-density residential district to the R2 median-density residential district. Opposition letters came in and opponents appeared at the planning commission meeting, primarily objecting to the zoning change, the density of the development, meaning the small lots, the number of live oak trees that might be affected, and the traffic concerns. The planning commission denied the request. Mr. Jenin, the developer, did not appeal. He listened to the objectors, thought about the issues they raised, and asked for a new site plan that met all the normal zoning requirements without requiring a zoning change or variances. This application meets those requirements. The subdivision layout meets the new zoning standards adopted by the Board of Supervisors in September 2022. The relevant changes that affected the design include increasing the minimum lot size from 6,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, having lots 75 feet wide instead of 60 feet wide, and having a maximum of three lots per acre. In this request, all the lots are at least 10,000 square feet, with each lot positioned to minimize the impact on the trees. The subject property is just over two acres, so six lots is the most that can be asked for without a variance. These will be very expensive homes elevated approximately 15 feet above the ground. Also on, um, that one, the circled area that is half a mile radius around the subject property. And there's hundreds of lots in that area that are smaller than 10,000 square feet. That's the chart of lots. The subject property surrounds the commercially zoned lot where Annie's Restaurant was prior to Hurricane Katrina. In the past, it had up to three houses on it. All were lost in the storm. What makes this land special is that it's like an island with one neighbor. The property fronts on Bayview Street, right across from the former Point Lumber Company to the north, and Mulaney Bayou to the south. To the east is Highway 90, which has a thick buffer of mature trees on it in the right-of-way. To the west is Third Avenue. The subdivision does not connect to Third Avenue. The subdivision has one neighbor, one house that fronts on Third Avenue and Bayou Mulaney. That property is a cousin of the current property owner and is not a primary residence. There are no other adjacent neighbors. That property owner has a letter to submit to the board today in support. Across Henderson Point and Past Christian Isles, most of the waterfront properties have been rebuilt, and you can see that on that map. However, most of the, uh, most of the waterfront properties have been rebuilt, however, a small percentage of the interior lots have come back. This subdivision gives every lot owner access to the community lot with an existing swimming pool and a pier deck along Mulaney Bayou. All the lot owners will have the opportunity to lease a boat slip on the bay side of the Third Avenue Bridge. Just as she said, the Third Avenue Bridge over Bay of Mulaney is probably six to eight feet above the water. So a boat with a hard top and antenna wouldn't be able to go underneath it. So if they have a bigger boat, they can keep it across the, across the bridge with open access to the bay. This plan gives tremendous value and amenities to all six lot owners. The subdivision request is separate from Mr. Jenin's commercial development, which is currently under construction on the commercially zoned Marina Blind Tiger Beach property. Mr. Jenin is concerned that the apprehensiveness felt by the objectors to the subdivision may actually be a concern about the future commercial activities at the Marina. The Marina is intended to be a community amenity for everyone in the neighborhood. That property is correctly done for the Marina and restaurant. From the beginning, for over three years, Mr. Jenin has worked with the Henderson Point Past Christian Isles Civic Association, which has over 350 members on both the Marina development and the subdivision. Long ago, he agreed to an early shutdown of outdoor music at the restaurant. He wants guests, not objectors. This application meets and exceeds all the zoning ordinance requirements for the requested conditional use permit. We respectfully ask you to deny the appeal and concur with the planning commission's recommendation to approve the subdivision. A couple of things about the trees. The property is residential. It's been residential since the zoning ordinance was adopted. Not every tree has a beautiful canopy. Not every tree has a trunk system built to survive big storms. There's at least one tree where the roots are uplifted. So their trees will be affected. But Larry Benfield, years ago, developed a subdivision with a bunch of live oaks on it, large live oaks, and it's now called Old Oak Subdivision. It's on, um, Dito Clan Road, near Canal, uh, Canal, uh, not Canal Street, but Canal, Canal Road. And he later told me that it was the subdivision that sold the fastest, that the lots sold faster than anything else because new houses built next to mature live oak trees are magic. It's very rare in real estate. So the trees can be trimmed. A few trees will be lost. But we know that the trees add tremendous value to the houses that would be built on this property. A couple of things that were mentioned earlier. The bulkheads, the bulkheads along the south side of the subdivision will be approved by Mr. Jenin. Yeah, they're currently dilapidated. There's a boat house that's, uh, part of the roof has come off. That's gonna be removed. Jet skis are available to any waterfront lot owner in Henderson Point. There's hundreds of them. We don't anticipate jet skis going through that side. It was a comment that somebody made, jet skis are noisy, but, you know, people would go into Bay St. Louis instead of running around through the neighborhood with all the piers sticking out. Bayview street congestion, you know, there's a red light at one side, which creates tremendous pausing between the traffic flow and then a stop sign on the other side. We really don't anticipate that traffic is gonna be a problem from six lots. And the right-of-way is 100 feet wide based in that street because at the very end is a boat launch. So, um, street improvements can be made over time if necessary if traffic does increase. It wouldn't be from six lots. The issue with four homes versus six homes. So this is very valuable property. And, uh, kinda out in the country where land prices aren't so valuable, you can use what's called flag lots to build a driveway to the lot where you build. That's what would be allowed or required to only do four lots here. But to do a subdivision, it takes building a street, which has a drainage plan, the bay, I mean, the bayou is right next to it. So this property is really ideally suited for a subdivision. And it's a much more valuable way to make, uh, real estate, the six lots that front there. The idea all along is to have covenants and a, uh, covenants that require a certain style of house. We anticipate single-story houses, but if somebody wanted to do a two-story house that just increases the number of square feet that they can build in their house. But we're looking for a beach theme, which is super appropriate next to the bay on the bayou. They will not be built out of cookie cutter from one builder, guaranteed to be sold individually. So people would build when they want to, but be constrained by the covenants. That would also maintain the pool. Like I said, the trees are the biggest value maybe other than the waterfront access for the lots. So the trees are absolutely gonna be preserved. And then the community lot is too small. It is not 10,000 square feet. So it is impossible. The pool could be added to somebody else's lot, but it could not be built independently. So six lots is the maximum that can be built on a two-acre parcel. Mr. Jenin is here to talk a little bit about the case. And, um, Ms. Nikki Butterworth, the current property owner, seller of the property, is here also. And we're here to answer any questions.
Yeah. Good morning. My name's Thomas Jenin, 2317 Wood, Stablewood Circle, Harrison County. Thank y'all for allowing us to come here and speak. I think Pat laid it out pretty well. I'm gonna just point out a few really quick things. First of all, my wife and daughter love oak trees. So we live, our house currently is surrounded by big, pretty oak trees. And Pat's right, they do add tremendous value to a residential home. You can't just go buy these things, right? So we're gonna do everything we can do to protect these trees. The mention of traffic, I think, is an overall concern. The entrance to Sandy Hook is beyond the proposed driveway that we would build. So everybody that lives on Sandy Hook and Ponce de Ley on it, they have to drive past the proposed street to take a right to go to their house. There is not a lot of traffic there currently, except for the weekends when people park their boats from the boat launch. Annie's Restaurant was 10,000 square feet. And Nikki confirmed it held in excess of 400 customers. It was a giant place. Wedding receptions, rehearsal dinners, retirement parties. It was massive. The restaurant that will eventually get built on the corner would be approximately 3,000 square feet with somewhere around 80 to 90 seats. So, you know, pre-Katrina, you had a big, giant, huge, ground-level restaurant. The new one has to be 18 feet in the air and would be much smaller. So again, nowhere near the traffic associated with the commercial corner now as opposed to what was there before. There's another theme about the canal and the boat traffic. The canal currently is, it's state public waterway, right? So all the people that live in Timber Ridge, anybody can go and come as they please. These six lots, what makes this so unique is that because we're developing the front part west of the Bay, I mean, the Third Avenue Bridge, if anyone buys a lot east of the bridge and they want a bigger boat, which most people will, I have the ability to lease them a slip in the back of the Marina site. And the whole idea is people will buy the lots, build a nice house. They will have to build to a certain aesthetic appeal. They park their car, and they don't get back in their car till they leave. That's the whole idea. So, you know, we looked at this carefully, and the, the common street allows for one way in and one way out as opposed to four or five different driveways. The legal descriptions on the lots will take care of the fear that there would be a seventh house built. There would never be a seventh house. And other than that, uh, I really, I don't think I can describe this any better, you know? And they, uh, this street's gonna come back really nice. These houses, I believe, will add an element of, of class. It all ties in well. The restaurant on the corner will be, you know, 25 to 30% of the size of what was there before. And I don't think six houses are gonna present any additional traffic issues. When we open the restaurant on the front, I think that's the concern. But that has nothing to do with the houses. So I appreciate y'all's time.
Mr. Jensen, would you be opposed to having a third-party arborist come in?
I would not. We've already had someone look at the trees. And again, you know, I have, uh, where we're building our new house, we lost a beautiful oak tree in the last tropical storm, you know? So no, I would not. You know, I guess I've never hired one, but Eric could probably help spot somebody. And I think we looked at the trees at one point.
Yep. I have a little bit of experience. But I think if we ever, if we go that route, somebody certified as a third party, then it can...
Well, he could probably tell us, he could answer any concerns that even we might have.
That's right.
Right, I would not be opposed to that.
Mr. Jenin, I did see in reading the record, some comments, if I'm not mistaken, that you will simply, once the, if the subdivision is approved, you will, you will not be in, connected to building the houses.
You know, I'm not a residential builder. I've built 13 new buildings, commercial.
I understand. Let me ask you, what assurances that you can give to the community that if you're not directly involved in determining what will be built there, what assurances can they have that what you say is gonna be built there will be built?
Well, the...
The quality of the houses?
Yes, sir.
The architectural concept of the houses?
Right.
Once it's approved and once you sell, what assurances will they have that those particular houses will be built?
Well, the, so the only way this works is if, um, if you bought a lot, whoever buys a lot, there's a swimming pool, there's an outdoor kitchen, there's a community area. There will be fees, there will be dues, you know, with respect to lawn maintenance, driveway maintenance, all that kind of...
Swimming pool maintenance?
Yes, sir. Yes. And the pool that's there is really awesome. It's huge. It's historical. They've had, you know, celebrities used to swim there. But yeah, there would be covenants, there would be architectural guidelines. You know, for an example, every house would have to have a certain amount of windows as it relates to walls. There would be at least one gas lantern. There would be, you'd have to use hardy blank, metal roof. I mean, it would be, everything would kinda look the same. I'm not saying I would not maybe build a house. We've got several people, you know, pretty much ready to pull the trigger. And, and there's a couple builders that I'm friends with that we would probably let build the houses. But yeah, there will be, um, I've actually talked to one of my attorneys, Robert Schwartz, who's helped me in the past, and he said that he would put a very simple covenant document together for me. But that would have to be there. That ensures the price point that we're looking for. You can't just buy a lot and throw up a cheap house with vinyl siding and paint it fluorescent pink or purple and gold, you know? So we would, uh, that's in my mind how that would work.
Any, any other questions?
So would that be an HOA? Would this be just a...
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it is something that's gonna be structured and organized?
Right.
It's not just a, just regular...
And so we also, so you know, I have maximized the DMR permit that we currently have on the Marina site. So there's a new permit in the works that goes through titans and Army Corps of Engineers. With the residential lots, I believe the way that it works, I can't sell a boat slip over state titans. I talked to Raymond Carter, the Secretary of State, returning on this briefly. But I can give access to that, to that boat slip. And so that's how it would work for the homeowner. I can't sell the state odd ones, but I can give them first option on access to that particular boat slip. And that would all be in the same documents. They would, the homeowner would have to say, I don't want it for me to be able to grant access to some... They would, the homeowner would have to say, "I don't want it for me to be able to grant access to someone else." As I understand it.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I don't know if it's for him or not, but I guess zoning, and maybe Eric, before any permit, if this is, if the appeal is denied, can we put some type of stipulation in that ensures that there's an HOA in place prior to any permitting for building if it is approved? Because, I mean, nothing against you, but you can say you're gonna do an HOA. You get it approved and just sell the lots.
I totally understand.
So, is there a mechanism that we can...
Typically, what happens is when you have a subdivision with, that has HOA restrictions, we make sure that we have an approval letter from the HOA before we process any permits.
Okay. We can make that part of the condition.
Because there's a lot of subdivisions that have architectural committees that have to approve the design before they can submit their plans. So, we get that approval in hand because we don't enforce covenants, but we're not gonna do anything to go directly against them.
Right. But what I'm seeing is...
Just ensure that that's in place prior to any...
Right. We can make that part of the condition, and if they don't do it, then...
No permits. And then one other question. All these lots are 10,000 square foot plus. Is that the, the current zoning for the rest of that area is 10,000?
I believe these are larger...
And then R1, R1 type one?
Okay.
The minimum is 10,000.
Right. And the, you know, again, this is, these lots are not for everybody, right? You, you're buying, you're buying what is almost like part of a resort, so to speak, because you're gonna be able to walk to three or four food and beverage options. I've already bought the water taxi. We're gonna have a water taxi that runs from the pier to Bay St. Louis. You don't have to drive across the bridge. You can keep your golf cart there. You can rent a pontoon boat or a jet ski. You can walk to a charter captain and he takes your grandkids fishing with you the next morning. And that's what we're selling. This is not, this is like resort-level type stuff.
I'll back you if you're thirty minutes.
Mr. Barrett, the, the minimum lot size is for new subdivisions. So, this is, this will be the first new street built in Henderson Point that I can recall since 2000. Most of Henderson Point is already planted lots and blocks, so it's never come up before. And there's not even larger parcels available to do subdivisions on it. So, this is a unique situation that it's the size.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Anything else? Mr. Butterworth?
I just, I just...
I have some... I have a presentation, about five minutes.
Okay. Of approval from the closest neighbor and some other people that support Thomas' thing. As far as the pool is...
At the commission?
I think they mailed some of them in, but not everybody got it mailed in. But I think that I probably care about this property more than anybody else since it's been in my family. I mean, you know, I care about what happens on the property. I wouldn't, I've had people offer me to do other things on the property that I just didn't think any, my in any or anybody else would ever think of. But this, to me, seems like the best bet in order to preserve the property. The property is, right now, needs bulkhead work. It's got a boathouse falling down. I just can't do it. It's a big piece of property to take care of for me to do all that. It kind of looks sad down there. It really does. It's kind of blighted. So, it needs development down there. I mean, a restaurant down there, Annie and Annie would just be, you know, my family's had property down there, and there used to be motels down there at one time. So, I just wanted to say that. But, I mean, I care as much as anybody else about the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Like I said before, there's still so many unknowns. What about sewage for the area? We always, we've had sewage issues before. That's up to y'all. The water taxi, that sounds great because you're transferring tax money that's gonna be spent in one county and you're sending it to another county. That's what y'all wanna do. The unknowns are, when they do a subdivision, so is the county responsible for the road going into that subdivision? Or does the subdivision pay for that?
I'll answer that question for you.
Okay.
Give me just a second. The road will have to be built to county specifications, and if it is, the county can accept maintenance of it, yes. Generally, we do.
He's talking about an HOA. HOAs are great. I live in an HOA community. The house across the street from me has leans upon leans upon leans upon leans because when I had it, they've never repaired it. So, I have a very expensive home sitting across from something that we can do nothing about because it's all tied up in the legal court system. And every time they go to court, he does just enough to satisfy the court and buy himself more time. So, you can say it's an HOA. What they wanna put in the HOA, you can enforce it. Nobody. I can tell you that right now. It's all good. It looks good on paper, but it's not enforceable. You can tell them that they can't paint a house a certain color, but they can paint that house and then she, and there's nothing you can do except take them to court. You can, the pool thing, who's gonna maintain it? If it doesn't get maintained and someone decides they're not paying the HOA fee... We have people in our neighborhood who don't pay the HOA fees. They don't pay them, and they figure when they sell the house or they die, it'll be somebody else's responsibility. In the meantime, things that we need to do in our neighborhood because other people are not paying the HOA fees can't address them because we don't have the fees to pay them. We have a community pool house ourselves, and things happen all the time, and they upped our fees because of people not paying their fees. You're only gonna have six people paying fees. So, if four of them decide not to pay fees, what's happening there? It sounds great on paper. The jet ski traffic thing, you know what? Nobody is in control of that. We live there, you know, he's saying about, you know, come and park your car. I'll be honest, I live right across, between my brothers and I, we own a nice chunk of property right there. We could probably subdivide and do similar to what they're doing if you wanna set that precedent. It's not that I would want to because I love the area. When we went there before Katrina, we did park our car, and we never left the property. We'd get in our boat, we'd go enjoy the water, we would crab, we would fish, we'd go to the beach because it's, that's the dominant and the rough right there. Like I said, we ended up buying a piece on Coin Dexter right there in past Christian Isles because we want to be in that area. That area, it's so sad to see what's happened on the other side of the bay because it's become so touristy, so commercialized. We used to go across the bay. I don't even wanna go across the bay anymore because I'm from the New Orleans metro area. I don't want it to be on Bourbon Street. I don't want all of that. I like the serenity that we had. Sure, six houses isn't gonna make that much difference. It's really not. So, why not just do four? If six isn't gonna be that big of a deal, why can't you just do the four? The four that needs no other permit, knows... I think that if you adhere to the guidelines that have already been established, the neighborhood could, we want the four houses, we don't want to put four houses. That's not supposed to be four houses. I don't see the need for six. I think that if you do the six, you have out the landowners that are, you're setting a precedent that's gonna change that whole, whole area, and it would be sad to see that happen. And it, like I said before, build the four. The tree, you know, it's talked about trees. Ten of those trees were put there after Katrina. Annie had them put on herself. I lived across the bayou. I saw them bring them in on tractor trailers, and they put them in because she wanted the trees back on her property. Am I that concerned about trees? Are the people really all about the trees? No. I'm more about setting a precedent that shouldn't be set in the future.
All right. Thank you.
I don't think there were trees brought in.
I saw them.
No discussion. Any questions?
I was there every day.
Excuse me, please. No discussion in the audience. Any questions from the board? So, Chair is turning now to entertain a motion.
Motion.
To uphold the appeal or deny it. Deny the... Right. Right here, a second.
Does the board wanna add two conditions that you...
Yeah, do you? You wanted to add your condition of...
Yeah, about third-party arborists.
All right.
Did you have a second?
Yeah.
You need to probably add that to your motions on order denying the appeal and adding two conditions. One is a third-party arborist to review the trees.
The other is to ensure that homeowners, the HOA is in place prior to any building permits being issued.
The two conditions.
Those are the two.
Can I have a second?
Yeah, I can. Ten seconds. Any further discussion? Here, none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Let's see, we go back to thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
You were back there. That's the one we're gonna change to February 12. Not on reading before that is thirty-three. It's the first reading. So, we need the first reading on this because it's been a second reading on the 12.
All right. Number thirty-three, order approving the first reading of the twenty-four, 2024 Mississippi Emergency Agency District Nine Regional罰 mitigation plan as recommended by the magistrate and the MA. And the second reading will be on the 12.
Yes, sir.
12. Right here, a motion.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Number thirty-four, approving access to the Harrison County Emergency Communications Radio System by Pafford EMS as recommended by the Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission at their meeting on January, January 29th, 24th, and authorizing the board president to sign the access agreement.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Here, none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Troy, did you ask for number thirty-two to...
Thirty-two being removed and put on the February 12 agenda.
Before we have...
We just need you to read it on thirty-three.
Okay. So, thirty-two. We went back to thirty-two?
Well, thirty-two was, is the one we put on February 12.
We already did that.
We did thirty-three.
I would need to table it, man. It's already on the agenda.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. You're asking us to...
Tim just said it right. Table number thirty-two.
Until February.
Till February 12.
Okay, so...
I'll make a motion.
Motion table.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. All right, now go thirty-five. Order authorizing the purchase of ten pair, ten pair of structural firefighting gloves and ten hoods from Bunk Gear Specialists at a total cost of $2,570, payable from state rebate fund, and authorize a budget amendment to 103-250606.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Two motions.
I can hear Mr. Barrett.
He was gonna make a motion, so I'm sure he approved his second, right? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Thirty-six, order approving the sole source purchase from Hazard Control Technologies Incorporated for HCT 500 encapsulator firefighting agent at a cost of $9,343, payable from 103-250606, and approving eight. Line item transfer from 103-250922 to 103-250606 for this purchase. Again, attached sole source letter and quote from the vendor.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. On the youth court, order approving travel for youth court, family intervention court staff to attend the All Rise National Conference in Anaheim, California, May 21st, 25th, 24th through 20th, payable from 030193475. That's the DOJ grant funds.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving filing on an application for the OJJ DP Fiscal Year 2024 Juvenile Drug Treatment Court Program Enhancement Grant.
Motion. Second.
Here, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion now for thirty-nine. Oh, I'm sorry, approving, approving amendment to the youth court budget to hire a second youth court prosecutor.
Motion table at the board. Second.
Motion table. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries.
I was just curious if there's any specific information that the board would request that I be prepared for as well? If there's anything in addition that I need to...
I guess the numbers of where we are today with backlog needed, informed prosecutor. Two, in the backup, there was something about the Kronos and the amount of time that the current one, current prosecutor has. Would that a breakdown on regular time, overtime, weekend, how much time that actually he's, you know, overloaded? Basically, those were the two major things I could think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having personal experience there, they need... Having personal experience on the youth court personally, but as an officer, they do need additional help. A lot of cases, and they've got more since they've changed the jurisdiction of the youth court. They've added it to seventeen now, which makes it more crimes being handled by the youth court.
Did we vote on that?
Yeah, motion is second to table.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing the county-wide Easter egg hunt to take place on Saturday, March 9th, 2024 at the following parts.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Here, none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. All right, acknowledge the receipt of and spreading of home in minutes, the lease applications and rental agreements for the Gulf Coast Winter Classics for years 2024, 25, 26, and 27.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving the four-year road plan.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order concurring with the road manager on employment as listed and on file with payroll personnel and human resources department.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving adding a 25-foot wide and 100-foot length extension to the Lususki Road located in Supervise the Voting District Three for maintenance.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Here, none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Forty-five, order approval of out-of-state travel as listed.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Now, forty-six is only getting straightened, Mr. Barrett.
Zoning recommends, concurring with the planning commission's recommendations for cases forty-six through fifty.
Any, Chairman, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Here, a second. Discussion? Here, none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. All right, item fifty-two, recognize the sheriff. All right, item fifty two, recognize the sheriff as he reports on the number first currently out in jail facility. And discuss other matters as so desired.
Seven hundred sixty-two total, two hundred twenty-nine state and twenty-seven federal inmates, and we've got a hundred and thirty-four that are ready to go. And I did want to add on fifty-eight and fifty-nine on the bid for communication and the food contract, that's going to be pending legal counsel, our legal counsel.
At the approval, subject to approval of legal.
Right.
Fifty-eight and fifty-nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me get back to where I was here.
Fifty-three.
Order accepting the only reverse auction bid received from Sunset Van Incorporated in the amount of ninety-four thousand three hundred and twelve hundred forty-five cents for purchase of a medical van to inmate transport for the Harrison County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving payment to the city of Long Beach Police Department in total amount of fifty-four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, sixty-nine cents for Operation Stone Garden Grant, overtime in the amount of ten thousand eight dollars and sixty-nine cents payable from zero three oh two two one four four oh and add equipment purchase vehicles in the amount of forty-four thousand five hundred and ten dollars payable from oh three oh two two one nine one five.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing inventory control clerk to remove asset number one ninety-four ninety-three two thousand and nine four to escape. Dead number one FMC U oh three G three nine K A eight five six nine six from the sheriff's inventory and donate to the Harrison County Senior Resources.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing.
That's the one we need to review.
That we just did?
No, it's fifty-six now.
Fifty-six, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Fifty-six, do we need to remove that or table it?
To remove it.
Just remove it, okay. Motion, Chairman will entertain a motion to remove item fifty-nine, uh, fifty-six.
I'd be sad just to deny it. Or take, deny it, it gets off.
Motion. Well, let me read it then, and we can deny it. Order authorizing purchase of a CDW dash G for Microsoft Office License for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of four thousand, uh, four dollars payable from oh three oh two three eight six nine oh first year twenty-three justice assistant grant. Is that, you want to deny that or just make it, make it approval of subject to review?
Yeah.
That subject to review, some.
Make a motion, subject to review.
Approved, subject to attorney review.
Yeah.
All right.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Fifty-six.
He said, he said rather than deny, he wants it approved, subject to attorney evaluation.
No, it's the, oh, he said fifty. Communications.
No, no, there was.
Oh, no, no, yeah, you're right.
Fifty-six, right, no.
We're on fifty-six.
No, it's fifty. Okay, fifty-six, we just, motion to deny.
I'll remove my motion, my second.
Okay, good.
Yeah, fifty-eight, fifty-nine.
Now the Chair will entertain a motion to deny.
Motion to.
No, we're not. No, we're on the wrong page. So fifty-six, he wants passed. Fifty-eight and fifty-nine is what needs to be approved.
I'm asking you on fifty-eight, what do you want to do with that one, Sheriff?
Fifty-six, yeah.
I'm sorry, fifty-six.
Approve.
And you want that subject?
Okay, well, okay, because we got an email from the office to remove that item from the agenda, so that's why.
Just remove it, fifty-six doesn't need to be on there.
Okay. It does not need to be on there.
It does not need to be on there.
So.
So it doesn't stand on your agenda, I recommend you deny it based on the withdrawal by the Sheriff's Department for consideration, that way it gets off the agenda until they put a maker.
I make a motion to deny.
And second.
You cleared it out.
I'm not going to ask. I'm not going to ask for any discussion, I'm simply going to ask for a vote. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries.
The last year, keep me on the table.
Let's try number fifty-seven. Order authorizing the Sheriff's Office to sell one block model twenty-two serial number Y U Y four six nine asset number twenty-three six seven one to retiring Deputy Barry Cannon for a fee of one dollar as allowed under Mississippi Code.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order accepting selection committee recommendation of Tiger Correctional Services as the lowest and best proposal received as tabulated for food services at the Harrison County Adult and Juvenile Detention Center and the Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy to begin insurance of the contract and ending on January third, two thousand twenty-eight, and authorizing the board president to sign contract on the date.
I'll make a motion to.
Go ahead.
To approve upon attorney review.
There you go, now we got it. We, I think we're on the right.
We're good now.
Yeah, that's the second one, okay. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. And I think the same is for the next one, okay. Order accepting the selection committee's recommendation of City Telcon as the best and lowest proposal received for inmate communication services at the Harrison County Adult Detention Facility to begin at issuance and end turn, and end of the terms of board, January third, two thousand twenty-eight, and authorizing the board president to sign the contract.
Motion of approval upon attorney review.
So here, second.
Second.
Discussion? The only discussion I had, I was looking at that, Sheriff, there was no amounts in the game. Don't you, don't you receive?
Ms. Forwards.
Don't, don't you receive a commission or a percentage of that, Troy?
Yes, it's a commission contract.
It's a commission contract. And I, of course, y'all, attorneys will review, but I just didn't see any amounts on the backups. The percentage amount that the Sheriff's Department would receive if approved.
Oh, it's in their proposal, it should have been on your backup.
Okay. I'll check and see, I didn't see it, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
It is on the backup.
It is?
Yes.
I looked through it, I must have overlooked. All in favor, signify by aye again? Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving the best quote from Southern, all, approving the best quote from Southern State K nine for one single purpose, K nine for the SRO Division, one dual purpose K nine for the Patrol Division and Trainer's Course. It costs thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars payable from oh two nine two one five nine two two, and authorizing the county administrator to transfer funds from oh zero two nine two one five nine one five.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order spreading upon the minutes, the personnel changes of the Sheriff's Office as listed and on file with payroll clerk, clerk, and human resource department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Discuss the only proposal submitted for medical, non, don, and pharmacy services for the Harrison County Adult and Juvenile Detention Centers. Got here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Discuss, is there any, any discussion? Do y'all have any discussion on that?
We do, because of litigation matters, I think we're in executive session.
Needed, needed approved?
I think he wants to discuss it in executive session before you approve.
Oh, okay.
Pass it, and he's called me about it, it does qualify for executive session before.
Okay.
Because it involves matter of potential litigation.
We'll delay this one and go into executive session. Thank you. County Administrator, order authorizing disposal of assets per attached list and authorizing the inventory clerk to remove.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving request for county email to be loaded on personal phone for the following listed employees.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Exactly what does that mean, county email?
To be able to get it on your phone, check your email.
It has to be approved. Y'all set that as a standard years ago, so it's anytime they're using a personal phone for county emails, it has to be approved.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing Jamie Cannon, DeIverville Civic Center Superintendent to be added to the list of take home vehicles for after hours on call in rentals.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed and on file with payroll clerk and human resources.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund one five oh zero 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 three six oh in the amount of one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, thirty-one cents payable from zero zero one three four one five eight one for street pickup at Harris location.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving travel as listed.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order correcting the inventory, adding back an item that was previously disposed of, but is still in use for attached lists, authorizing inventory clerk to add back to inventory.
Motion.
Here second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing following line transfers within Parks and Recreation Budget.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order adding Andrew Raul, District Two Road Department to the list of take home vehicles.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three, purchase orders paid in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four as attached, as attached list, as per attached list.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving claims document per Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two. Second. Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving of claims list.
Motion.
Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving payment of the following claims.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledging receipt of check number twenty-four seven one one four in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars issued by Hancock Whitney Bank, then distribution to the Harrison County Chancellor of Clerk of remaining funds transferred in preparation to close account MBD Harrison S C R two thousand eighteen.
Motion.
Second. Here here, second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving payment to the Harrison County School District for two thousand twenty-four rental payments on sixteen section land, sixteen section lands leased by Harrison County at least.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order rescinding, rescinding order approving employment of Chancellor of Clerk Angela Thrash for records preservation and restoration contract per Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two, section nineteen five fifteen one, then agenda item number ten, twenty, number twenty-two, file ID twenty-four dash twenty-three thirty-seven of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
She didn't last very long.
No, she didn't, did she? Or did I put the job too hard? All in favor. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving employment of Chancellor of Clerk Angela Thrash for records preservation and restoration contract per Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two annotated section nineteen fifteen two.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving a two thousand annual salary increase for the Harrison County Justice Court Judges effective January first, two thousand twenty-four pursuant to Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two annotated section twenty-five three thirty-six two eight.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion passes. Order spreading on, upon the minutes, the executed memorandum of understanding by and between Mobile Medical Ambulance Services Incorporated in Harrison County, Mississippi, starting February first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Well, you would add that you're ratifying that execution.
Yeah.
Because the board authorized that contract to be signed, but the terms.
So we ratify.
It's better ratified, but the terms are not the same as really the board proved it previously.
Let the, let the motion reflect it's ratifying rather than executing. Did I hear a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order denying claim of Mary Allen seeking damages alleged to have resulted from a cycling accident which occurred on Highway ninety sidewalk boardwalk here at Walmart Lane in Biloxi on or about June the fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
The board's information is with a claim that's dealing with a sidewalk, it's not under the county jurisdiction, it's MDOT, so that's the reason for denying it.
All right. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving agreement with Brown Mitchell and Alexander Incorporated for professional engineering services related to the Mississippi Sound Coalition Project.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Only discussion, that is basically money that we'll, installing in our efforts to. By aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving the notice of limitation of use for real property use for development of the Biloxi River Boat Launch and authorizing the boat president, authorizing the board president to sign and set notice and directing Chancellor of Clerk to file the same in land records of Harrison County First Judicial District.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing the board president to execute his special use permit allowing CRT A N G, which is the Mississippi National Guard, to use Fire Station fourteen located in Henderson Point during the Southern Strike exercises between April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion.
Here second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Order authorizing the board president to execute and submit the application for the non-compete grant for Harrison County from the Mississippi Department of Environment Quality for fiscal year twenty-four in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and one dollars to fund the Rocco McFarland household hazardous waste site.
Motion second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Author, auto-authorizing and approving use of the DeIverville Civic Center by the City of DeIverville for the BBQ Fest on March the eighth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four, for pursuant to the terms of the local governmental cooperation agreement between the city and Harrison County.
Motion second.
Discussion. Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Order approving the waiver of rental fees for the periodic use of Harrison County Fairgrounds by Mississippi Coast Buddies Sport Incorporated, the host, its riding with the buddies horseback riding sessions.
Motion second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Order adjudicating tax sales of August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three on tax parcel number zero eight zero nine D O three oh oh eight zero 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 for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two taxes erroneous and thus void of an issue and for related purposes. Does your second, any discussion, Tim?
This is, this was a piece of, tax sale on a piece of school district property, I believe it was the police had inspired, so we sold the lease that it exists. So it made me so.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Order adjudicating tax sale of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three on tax parcel number one two one O F O two oh three three oh 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 for twenty-two taxes erroneous and thus void of an issue and for related purposes.
Motion.
Second, do you hear second?
Second.
Discussion.
This was the same issue that told us accidentally closed instead of. Eighty-nine, am I, about?
Ninety.
Sorry.
Ninety.
This was an error in assessment due to a clerical error. Qualified as to be set aside where the assessor made the error.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Order adjudicating employment of Timothy Holloman, Bois Holloman, and Associates to represent Harrison County in the matter of the estate of Jerry McWilliams by Samuel E. Williams Administrator versus Harrison County Mississippi Board and Mississippi Board Supervisors. Circuit Court of Harrison County First Judicial District calls number eight two four oh one dash two oh two three dash forty-four.
Motion second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Order approving temporary telecommunication facility lease agreement with sale of your south real estate incorporated for real property located on one oh four five oh Lammy Bridge Road, DeIverville, Mississippi.
Motion second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Order adjudicating and authorizing expenditures that listed as necessary to advertise and bring in the favorable notice to competencies, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including all forms of advertising, including but not limited to broadcast advertising, logo recognition on publicity collateral, other media, and all broadcast printed material and signage along with the link displayed by Harrison County online. Recipients are required to show proof of advertisement payable from zero zero two one hundred five twenty-two. Now, your motion?
Motion.
Here second. Discussion. Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, no, the motion carries. Okay, I see. First, on the addendum, adjudicate beach permit for the food network on February second twenty-four, Highway ninety, south of Treasure Bay Casino.
Motion.
There second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. All right, at this time, entertain a motion to receive recommendations for the ambulance committee.
Motion.
Do you hear second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Matt, here are the recommendations.
Yes, sir, recommendation for last meeting stands and appreciate.
Just restate it for the purpose of the record.
Yes, sir, so we do have the members of the ambulance committee here today, representatives from Long Beach, Past Christian, as well as the sheriff. Chief Sullivan is on travel and can't be here with us today, but the recommendations of the committee stand that we do recommend selecting the proposal put forward by Acadian and recommend entering in negotiations with Acadian.
Okay. Sheriff, now we'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation and authorize negotiations with Acadian Ambulance Services, contract, contract negotiations with them. Sheriff, entertain a motion as such.
Is that what we're doing?
Well, we're accepting their recommendation and authorizing negotiating, negotiations of a contract with them. We need to negotiate the contract.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any further discussions? The only discussion that I have now, I want to make sure that the committee notifies their respective governmental entities and making sure that those mayors and as well our board supervisors be involved in that negotiation.
Yes, sir.
Not only them, but make sure your mayors as well will be participating in those negotiations.
We'll make sure that that gets, that everybody.
Make sure everybody gets a copy of a proposal so that they can make comments.
Yes, sir, I understand.
The plan is okay if I send a copy of the contract that's been sent to me to the board, to the attorneys for respect.
Absolutely. Everybody, we want to make sure everybody's knowledgeable and is aware of it in negotiations.
Yes, sir.
Okay, could we vote?
The motion.
All in, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Okay, let's, let's go around.
You still have, have the addendum?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I like to let them out. It sure is. Order approving contract for professional services between Harrison County and Southern Mississippi Planning and Development District and authorizing the board president to execute the same.
Motion second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. I apologize for.
Do we need to fund that contract? Do we need to, does the board need to fund that contract to correct where it's going to be?
Did I miss it, the plan?
Yeah.
What account number is going to come up?
Yeah, well, okay. Do we have it?
County administrators.
County administrators.
Budget.
To appropriately fund it too, so the motion will reflect that.
The payment will come out of county administrator's budget.
I got you, okay.
Then next meeting, we'll, we'll do the other things, take care of the other issues.
Okay. All that, that's all in favor, signify by aye then?
Aye.
With the note, the motion carries. So that covers it, I guess. Anything else? Before we go into executive session, let's go out, Tim, you got anything?
No, I think the executive session is involved with jail issues with qualified for executive service. Angela?
I do. So about six months ago, Chief for Clark's Office has used Harris' computer systems to generate a software where you don't have to print pay stubs anymore. I think the county administrator talked to the board about it, but, so, we paid for this system six months ago. The county has paid for it, we've paid for it out of Circuit Clark's budget, so I would recommend instead of county, instead of printing paychecks for the county employees, there's a county portal that each employee can go on and print their W twos and their pay stubs. And it's been paid, you know, the county's just wasted, I guess, six months of not using the system that has already been implemented.
So that rather than printing, you, you're talking about there not only the check, you're talking about the copies of the check, or.
Doc, what she's talking about is the, the envelope that every county employee receives with their pay stub.
The pay stub, that's what I was trying to say.
Now, give you an example, for thirty-one years, I took my whole drawer and threw it in the trash, because you don't, you don't need them, but.
Yeah.
If an employee does need it, they can go to this portal and pull their, pull it up on their own.
Their W two forms as well.
So we'll print the W two forms, but if for some reason you lose them, you don't have to go back to the payroll clerk and request another W two, you can log into your portal and pay for it.
Right.
Now, Robbie never followed up on it, and I don't know, is Jeremy in here? So Jeremy was going to follow up on it, to get with Chris, our I T director, who was doing it for our department.
I agree. Those stuff, I did the same thing as Sheriff Troy said.
And.
So it's a waste of money.
The county's cost was over four thousand, and circuit's cost was eight hundred ninety-seven. So if we can implement that, that would be great.
What do you need from us?
Just the okay.
Will the board authorize that?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries.
Yes, and I think what Jeremy will do is he'll send an email to activate, that's what Chris did, he sent an email to each employee to activate the portal under your username and password.
It's not, it shouldn't be that complicated, should it? Supervisor, please?
I'm good, thank you.
I have one thing I'd like to make, entertain a motion to hire Clay Daniel as District Three Safety Officer with the condition that he obtain law enforcement certification within a, within a one-year period.
Motion second.
In discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. That's it for me, Troy?
No, sir.
Sheriff? That's the answer. Tim?
No, that was a question by the sheriff's department.
Motion.
And that involves a combination of personnel potential litigation, qualified for executive session.
Oh, here's the motion second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.